From the executive session, and I'll entertain a motion to adjourn finance.
Okay, council came out of executive session at 7:22 PM, and I will make a motion to adjourn the finance committee.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. So Jared, we ready to move on? Okay, this time I'd like to call the February 13th, 2023 council meeting to order if you please rise for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Hazeltine. Lamb.
Here.
Rose.
Here.
Shields.
Here.
Simpson.
Here.
Coin.
Here.
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 Reading of the minutes?
Mr. President.
Mr. Shields?
I move that the minutes of the regular meeting of January 23rd, 2023, as prepared and submitted by the clerk, be approved.
Second. Any discussion on the approval of the minutes? Will the clerk please call the roll on the approval of the minutes?
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Here.
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
Reports of standing committees, the finance committee met prior to council this evening and will again meet in two weeks, health, safety, and sanitation, Mr. Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. President. We're hoping to have, I haven't had a chance to talk to Chief Kenny yet, but I think he'll probably agree, we're hoping to have a health sanitation, safety, health, safety sanitation meeting on the 27th prior to our finance committee meeting, just to go over updates with what they expect to be happening in their respective departments this year. Thank you.
Thank you. Public properties, Mr. Shields.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Simpson, you might have beat me too. I know Mr. Worley and I are trying to schedule public properties, and we had looked at maybe before our, before our council meeting, but we'll defer to you on this next one, and we'll figure out another, but public properties, no report this evening, but we are working on scheduling a meeting.
Thank you. Special legislation, Mr. Lamb.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report, but I have said at a couple of meetings that I would schedule, start scheduling meetings because I have a lot, we have a lot in committee, but I had some things come up that occupied more time than I thought, so I, I sent an email to Councilmen Rose and Hazeltine, let them know I'm going to give them dates so we can start, start to get going on the issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Streets and sidewalks, Ms. Here.
Thank you, Mr. President. No report and no meeting scheduled at this time. Thank you.
Emerging technologies, Mr. Rose.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have no report, no meeting scheduled for our committee, but the advisory committee is having a meeting on the 30th of March, and don't forget to fill out the electric car survey on the link off the city website.
Thank you. Request for council action, we have several for finance, we have 2333 budget amendments, 2334 amend PO 23609 account number, 2335 bids for the 2023 equipment and general pavement services, 2336 bids for the job number 1144, 2023 concrete street repair, 2337 bids for job number 1145, 2023 concrete pavement joint sealing, 2338 request for ARPA funding for the airport apron pavement replacement, 2339 amend PO 211359 vendor Medina County sanitary engineers, 2340 2023 carry forward request ordinance, 2341 bids for the self-contained breathing apparatus SCBA for the fire department, 2342 certified local government grant Ohio Historic Preservation Office, and 2343 expenditure for the signal service for the service department. Reports of minister officers, Mayor Hamel.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. President. The annual four days chaplain service was held Tuesday, February 7th, at St. Paul's Episcopal Church. I'd like to thank St. Paul's for hosting, as well as Councilman-at-Large Paul Rose and Medina Municipal Court Judge Gary Warner, who attended with me. Tomorrow, February 14th, at 9:00 AM, I've been asked to do an interview with Cleveland's National Public Radio about the Medina community. For those that may be interested in listening in on the interview, you may go to the website, www.idastreamalltogether.org, and then there's a button to press to listen live, or you can also go to the FM station 89.7, which WKSU, and do the same. I'm honored to be invited for the interview. It's only supposed to last 15 to 20 minutes, excuse me. And then two upcoming events on Tuesday, February 21st, from 5:00 PM to 9:00 PM at the Foundry Social, the Second Baptist Church, and Sister Circle of Medina is having a first responders appreciation night at the Foundry, and this event was graciously sponsored by the Stevenson Foundation. And then last but not least, on Thursday, February 23rd, at 7:00 PM, the American Association of University Women will host the 21st Annual Black History Month Program at Fellowship Baptist Church located at 901 West Liberty Street, and this year's program is titled, "The Struggles and Triumphs of African-American Physicians," and the event is open to the public. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Durham, Director of Finance.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just have my usual reminder that the city of Medina does have an income tax, so if you are a city resident and you wanted to wear that, you are now. RITA collects the income tax for us, that's the Regional Income Tax Agency there at www.rita-ohio.com, and you can get the forms and everything you need to file there.
Thank you, Mr. Huber, Law Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report.
Chief Kenny, Police Department.
Thank you, Mr. President. We still have a limited supply of steering wheel locks for Kia and Hyundai vehicles. The requirements are that you are a city Medina or a Lafayette Township resident, and that your Hyundai or Kia is started with a key rather than a push-button start. The push buttons are not eligible for this program. The locks are being distributed due to the increase in vehicle theft incidences involving those two brands of vehicles. The lock devices have been provided by Hyundai and Kia at no cost to the police department. All you need to do is come to the lobby and request those locks, and there is a limited supply, so they won't last forever. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Pat, City Engineer.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a reminder, our West Smith and Prospect Street projects are under construction. Their local access is being maintained, detours have been set up as necessary, and we appreciate everyone's patience and understanding. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lastuka, Municipal Court.
Thank you, Mr. President. No new report this morning, this evening.
Mr. Pacoli, Service Director.
Thank you, Ms. President. With the recent break in weather, our crew's been using the camera that we purchased that council approved, and then the jetting of storm sewers where our problematic areas are, so we're getting a good jump on that at least. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Worley, Parks and Recreation Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a couple of updates from the rec center. We recently opened registration for our summer camp that takes place from June 5th through August 11th and runs for 10 weeks. We have three different camps going on. We have Discover Camp, which is for children ages six to 12. We have a half-day preschool camp for children ages three to five, and half-day specialty camps for children six to 12, covering all sorts of activities like fitness, soccer, art, volleyball, basketball, tennis, and flag football. This coming Friday, the 17th, we are hosting a Parents Night Out Valentine's Day Dance from 5:30 to 10:00 PM for children ages six to 13. Registration is still available at medinarec.org. And then yesterday, Sunday, we hosted our first ever indoor triathlon and biathlon. We had a total of 72 participants registered, and many volunteers who volunteered their time to help make the event a success. I wanted to congratulate all the participants, as well as thank all of our staff who were involved with organizing the event. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gladys, Building Official.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report.
Thank you. Chief Walters, Fire Department.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report.
Thank you. Mr. Dutton, Planning and Community Development Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. Few months ago, council authorized staff to solicit an award, an RFP, for a multi-use plan. We received a number of proposals for the project and have selected a company called Invision out of the Cleveland area. They've done a number of projects that are similar in Avon and New Philadelphia, and they also did the Plum Creek Greenway Plan, which is the south side of Brunswick leading out into the county, so we're excited to get started on that project. Thank you.
Thank you. Noticees, communications, petitioners, there are unfinished business. We have ordinance 1823.
Mr. President.
Mr. Shields?
I move that ordinance 18-23 be read by title only and put on the floor for discussion as a second reading this evening.
Second. Thank you. Ordinance 1823 is an ordinance rezoning the property located at south of Lafayette Road and west of Industrial Parkway, parcel number 02819C 17041, from an I-1 industrial to an R3 high-density urban residential. Mr. Dutton, just want to give a quick update on this again, a short synopsis.
Sure, yes, this is the rezoning from I-1 to R3. It's property just south of the existing Brookdale Mobile Home Park on Lafayette Road to the west of Industrial Parkway. The intent of the proposal was to expand the mobile home park to the south, kind of behind the industrial area. It was heard by our planning commission in November, they recommended approval. We also had a public hearing on January 9th, in which we received no public comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have introduction of visitors. Members of the public, we've admitted the opportunity to speak on any issue concerning which pertains to the city during the portion of the council agenda devoted to introduction of visitors. Our comments will be directed to the chair, and a reasonable time limit of approximately five minutes will be imposed. If there's a group, please appoint a spokesperson. Speakers should approach their rear microphone and state their name and address so it can be entered in the minutes. If there are members of the public, we afford the opportunity to comment on other portions of the meeting as is determined by the chair or by a vote of the majority of council members present. Is there anybody that wishes to address council at this time? We have a packed audience today, so I don't know. Okay, introduction and consideration of ordinances and resolutions. At this time, I entertain a motion to suspend the rules requiring three readings on the following ordinances and resolutions. Ordinance 2423, 2523, 2623, 2723, 2823, 2923, 3023, 3123, 3223, 3323, 3423, 3523, 3623, Resolution 3723, and ordinance 3823.
Mr. President.
Mr. Shields?
I'll make a motion to suspend the rules requiring three readings of tonight's ordinance and resolutions.
Second. Any discussion on the motion to suspend the rules on three readings? Will the clerk please call the roll on the motion to suspend the rules on three readings?
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Here.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
Ordinance 2423, an ordinance amending part three, sections 301, 351, 353 of the codified ordinances of the city of Medina, Ohio pertaining to public parking lots, garages, parking regulations.
Moved to approve, sorry.
Second. Discussion, Mr. Dutton?
Thank you, yes, this is a ordinance that deals with a couple of different topics regarding public parking. First, it creates some just general regulations for our city lots and garages that the city engineer basically administers and oversees the lots, and the mayor is able to place time restriction on lots and other requirements. The second part is a parking permitting program for residents that live in the downtown area of either historic district or historic landmark. With the permit allows them to exceed any time requirements in public lots or garages. It doesn't designate a spot or allow anything like that. I'll note that it was recently amended to section 351.15(c) to just clarify that this program's only open to residents. It would not be open to anyone who's a hotel guest or motel guest or had a bed and breakfast. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Will the clerk please call the roll on adoption?
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Here.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Ordinance 2423 passes six zero.
Ordinance 2523, an ordinance amending section 3102B6 of the salaries and benefits code of the city of Medina, Ohio relative to municipal court probation grant positions.
Moved to approve.
Second. Discussion?
Mr. President.
Mr. Shields?
The emergency clause has been requested, I move to add it this time.
My second includes the emergency clause.
Discussion on the emergency clause and/or the ordinance, Cindy?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is just to, both of these positions are funded through the CCA and J-Rig grants. We just want to bring their salaries up to the same amount as what we're paying the other probation officers at this time.
And the emergency clause?
Oh, is because the court has already authorized, the increase is back on January 1st, and we have one person who's just waiting for this to go through so we can get her retro all the way back from January.
Thank you. Any further discussion or comment on the ordinance and/or the emergency clause? Will the clerk please call the roll on adoption of the emergency clause?
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Here.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
Will clerk please call the roll on adoption of the ordinance?
Coin.
Yes.
Here.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Ordinance 2523 passes six zero.
Ordinance 2623, an ordinance authorizing a payment of $30,000 to Main Street Medina for the city's 2023 membership renewal.
Moved to approve.
Second. Discussion, Mayor Hamel?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd respectfully ask council to authorize this. We've been, the city and our businesses in the downtown historic district have been greatly benefited by the Main Street program. I know they were here for the finance committee meeting to share the numbers and, and the generation of revenue by bringing in outside folks, and I'd also just mention that we've been at full occupancy for 12-plus years now downtown.
Any further discussion or comment? I just want to say that we've been doing Main Street, I remember when it was first adopted many years ago, and of course, the downtown has flourished and the events have flourished, and we've become a real attraction in northeast Ohio, and I think that's great. It says a lot about our community and the ability to come together and use our major asset to square for the events that we have, and I think we're able to share our, the beauty of our square, our historic nature of our square with many members around northeast Ohio, and I think that's a great thing that we accomplished. Any further discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll on adoption of the ordinance?
Here.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Ordinance 2623 passes six zero.
Ordinance 2723, an ordinance authorizing expenditure of $10,575 to the Medina County Society for the Prevention of Cruelty to Animals, SPCA, for animal-related services for the year 2023.
Moved to approve.
Second. Discussion, Mr. Rose, I think this came from you.
Yes, sir. Thank you, thank you very much. This number, 10575, represents a 3.5 plus a little bit of rounding over the 10, too, we gave them last year, 2022. The SPCA does perform a service for the city in helping to keep animals off the street. They do move some animals into adoption, they deal with other animals as necessary, and I think this is money well worth it.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Mayor Hamel?
I'd just like, for the public's benefit, we're one of the few cities that does not have an animal control person on staff, and this collaboration with the Society for the Protection of Cruelty to Animals is, is good because it helps them financially, and it's good for the city because frankly, it's, it's cheaper than having a, a staff member try to do this. So we both win.
Thank you. Any further discussion or comment? Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the ordinance?
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Here.
Yes.
Ordinance 2723 passes six zero.
Ordinance 2823, an ordinance authorizing a water service connection at 4599 Ebbyville Road located in York Township.
Moved to approve.
Second. Discussion, Mr. Pacoli?
Thank you, Ms. President. Gentleman owner of 4599 Ebbyville Road approached the service office in December about acquiring a tap on the city mainline water main. This is York Township property, however, the county doesn't provide, they're not there in front of the property, and we are across the street. He's grateful for the consideration, and it'll allow him to build an ADA-equipped home and enhance the quality of life for him and his family. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll on adoption of the ordinance?
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Here.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Ordinance 2823 passes six zero.
Ordinance 2923, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to advertise for competitive bids and award a contract to the successful bidder for a one-year supply of various kinds of maintenance materials needed for the streets and water lines, including, but not limited to, salt, the chemicals used for use in the treatment of water, and water meters to be used for various departments of the city of Medina, Ohio.
Moved to approve.
Second. Discussion, Mr. Pacoli?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just as you read all the materials for water system maintenance, as well as the concrete stone, sand for service in parks, city served well by this, so we appreciate the, appreciate the consideration of the ordinance.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll on adoption of the ordinance?
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Here.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Ordinance 2923 passes six zero.
Ordinance 3023, an ordinance adopting the city of Medina's equal employment opportunity policy.
Moved to approve.
Second. Discussion, Mayor Hamel?
Thank you, Mr. President. I asked Mr. Huber to put this together. The city has a long history of following all the EEO requirements of both the state and federal government. However, we realized in researching that the city had never adopted a policy through the city council, so although it was on our, our job descriptions and on our applications, we felt it best to have it formally adopted by the council, and that's what this ordinance does.
Any further discussion? Clerk, please call the roll on adoption of the ordinance?
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Here.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Ordinance 3023 passes six zero.
Ordinance 3123, an ordinance amending ordinance number 21, 221, 22, passed December 12th, 2022, amendment to the 23 budget.
Moved to approve.
Second. Discussion, Mr. Durham?
Thank you, Mr. President. These are budget amendments. The first two are pass-throughs where we've received money, but we need to appropriate it in order to be able to spend it, and then the rest are items where we need additional appropriations to meet the needs of the city.
Any further discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll on adoption of the ordinance?
Coin.
Yes.
Here.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Ordinance 3123 passes six zero.
Ordinance 3223, an ordinance authorizing the increase of the expenditure to Goodyear Tire and Rubber Company for the sanitation department.
Moved to approve.
Second. Discussion, Mr. Pacoli?
Thank you, Ms. President. Our original PO was granted on January 9th for $15,000, and we're asking for an increase to get through the year with this ordinance. We have recap truck tires that we get in their state bid pricing, sanitation appreciates the opportunity to use this company as they deliver and pick up as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll on adoption of the ordinance?
Here.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Ordinance 3223 passes six zero.
Ordinance 3323, an ordinance of the council to hold the city of Medina, Ohio, certifying that when a municipal obligation was incurred, sums were lawfully appropriated in the funds to satisfy the obligation, and sufficient sums currently exist to satisfy this obligation.
Moved to approve.
Second. Discussion?
Mr. President.
Mr. Shields?
The emergency clause has been requested, I moved to add it this time.
My second includes the emergency clause.
Discussion, emergency clause and ordinance, Mr. Durham?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is what's called a then and now, it's an expenditure that's already been made. The emergency clause is requested because it was an emergency repair to the railroad, and we've already had the repair, we need to get the contractor paid.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the ordinance and/or the emergency clause? Will the clerk please call the roll on adoption of the emergency clause?
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Here.
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
Will clerk please call the roll on adoption of the ordinance?
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Here.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Ordinance 3323 passes six zero.
Ordinance 3423, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to advertise for competitive bids and award a contract to the successful bidder for the purchase of one PACMAC RLM 13 series
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coyne?
Yes.
Hare?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coyne?
Yes.
Hare?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coyne?
Yes.
Hare?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Ordinance thirty-two twenty-three passes six zero.
Ordinance thirty-one twenty-three, an ordinance amending ordinance number twenty-one, two twenty-one, twenty-two, past December twelve, twenty twenty-two, amendment to the twenty-three budget.
Moved to approve.
Second. Discussion, Mr. Durham?
Thank you, Mr. President. These are budget amendments. The first two are pass-throughs where we've received money, but we need to appropriate it in order to be able to spend it. And then the rest are items where we need additional appropriations to meet the needs of the city.
Any further discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll on adoption of the ordinance?
Coyne?
Yes.
Hare?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coyne?
Yes.
Hare?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coyne?
Yes.
Hare?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coyne?
Yes.
Hare?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coyne?
Yes.
Hare?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Ordinance thirty-five twenty-three passes six zero.
Ordinance thirty-five twenty-three, an ordinance authorizing a payment to Dunlop and Johnson, Inc. for the work performed at the Medina County Better Women's Shelter as part of the CDBG Target of Opportunity Grant.
Moved to approve.
Second. Discussion, Mr. Dutton?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a request to authorize a payment of one hundred and forty-one thousand to Dunlop and Johnson, Inc. for work at the Medina County Better Women's Shelter as part of a CDBG Target of Opportunity Grant. This contract covers the cost of insulation of cupboards and new flooring throughout the shelter. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll on adoption of the ordinance?
Simpson?
Yes.
Coyne?
Yes.
Hare?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coyne?
Yes.
Hare?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coyne?
Yes.
Hare?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coyne?
Yes.
Resolution thirty-seven twenty-three, a resolution supporting phase one of the Friends
of the Cemetery, Spring Grove Cemetery entry gate and mausoleum repair project.
Moved to approve.
Second. Discussion, Mr. Worley?
Thank you, Mr. President. The Friends of the Cemetery submitted a letter of intent to the city to address one of the projects that was identified in the Spring Grove Master Plan two thousand eighteen to repair the entry gate and mausoleum. They're planning on doing this in two phases. The first phase will be performing onsite observations to document work that's required to repair the mausoleum and entry gate. Once we see those plans and look at the engineer's estimate, we'll move on to phase two. But this resolution is authorizing them to move forward with the project and donate the architect's work to the city to the amount of fourteen thousand two hundred and seventy-five dollars. Again, I want to thank the Friends of the Cemetery for their continued efforts in preservation and enhancement of spring growth.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll on adoption of the resolution?
Hare?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coyne?
Yes.
Hare?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coyne?
Yes.
Resolution thirty-seven twenty-three passes six zero.
And ordinance thirty-eight twenty-three, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to advertise for competitive bids and order a contract to the successful bidder for the purchase of self-contained breathing apparatus, SCBA, for the fire department.
Moved to approve.
Second. Discussion?
Mr. President?
Mr. Shields?
The emergency clause has been requested. I moved to add it this time.
My second includes the emergency clause. Discussion on the ordinance and the emergency clause. Chief Walters?
Thank you, Mr. President. This request is to accept bids and ultimately place an